I call this meeting of the Upshur County Commissioner Order. We will initiate the meeting with a moment of silent meditation followed by pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone. We'll initiate or begin our meeting with Jackie, three minutes.
Good morning.
Morning, Jackie.
The Upshur County Commission of Upshur -- the County Commission of Upshur County, West Virginia, held a regular meeting at the Courthouse Annex on Thursday, January 23 to 2014 at 9:00 a.m. J.C. Rafferty called the meeting to order. The bill will present J.C. Rafferty, Commissioner, Donnie Tenny, Commissioner, Troy Brady, Commissioner, Megan Palmer, County Administrator, Jennifer Dinklow, Assistant County Administrator, and Jacqueline Dinklow, Secretary. The meeting began with a moment of silent meditation and prayer followed by the pledge of allegiance. All motions passed unanimously unless otherwise stated. After reading of the minutes, on motion by Donnie Tenny, seconded by Troy Brady, the Commission approved the regular meeting minutes of January 16, 2014 as submitted. After discussion on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by Donnie Tenny, the Commission approved the appointment of Richard Edwards as first District Community Representative to the Upshur County Fire Board. Mr. Edwards' term will expire on June 30, 2016. After discussion on motion by Donnie Tenny, seconded by Troy Brady, the Commission approved the resignation of Jennifer Dinklow as Upshur County Assistant Administrator effective June 31, 2014. The Commission approved dollar invoices per payment. The Commission approved all vacation orders. The Commission approved the following settlements as listed. The Commission approved the following misunions and/or refunds as listed. The Commission approved the following requests for time out of office for Commission employees as listed. Janella Cochran, Lewis Upshur Animal Control Facility Director, appeared before the Commission and provided an update slash status report on facility activities and events and highlights of Ms. Cochran's update included. Number one, the shelter has placed 63.5 percent of the 1,421 animals they have been housed in the shelter over the past year. The shelter passed a Board of Veterinary Medicine Inspection with a grade of 100 percent. They had a spay slash neuter run on Monday, January 20 with participation of 15 cats and four dogs, planning another event on February 24. Signups already in progress. For seven is a list of approved volunteers working on the shelter policy. The Democrat newspaper featured photos of shelter animals, has helped with lost animals and adoptions. Ms. Cochran reviewed policies of Lewis and Upshur Counties concerning dogs that have been confiscated due to biting incidents. Currently, the two counties have conflicting policies. The Lewis County policy is to destroy the affected dog while the Upshur County policy allows for the discretion of the director. Ms. Cochran requested that Upshur County join with the Lewis County policy for the purpose of uniformity since Lewis and Upshur Counties partner in the facility. J.C. Rafferty advised Ms. Cochran to follow up the document preparation presented to the Commission at a future meeting. J.C. Rafferty reviewed the following four-year information items. Number one, agendas and/or notes to meetings as listed. Number two, meeting minutes and/or financial reports as listed. Number three, board of declarization and review as listed. Number four, meetings as listed. Number five, appointments needed or upcoming as listed. J.C. Rafferty provided an update and discussion on Upshur County Development Authority meeting items. Included the conclusion of the new armory July or August and possible plans for usage of the old armory building. Discussion included possibility of housing some type of youth organization, i.e. Stalker Youth Center, YMCA, Boys and Girls Club, et cetera, and/or private businesses. West Virginia Secretary of Commerce Keith Verdat will be touring the locations during the next week. Other items included a grant to the Development Authority from the West Virginia Development Office in the amount of $31,000 and discussion on forming an Upshur County Foundation for the benefit of community organizations and projects. Richard Edwards, Upshur County resident, requested clarification concerning the meaning of self-sustaining slash self-supporting as related to youth organization opportunities under consideration for tenancy in the old armory building. Donnie Tenny provided an update on Region 7 Planning and Development Council Projects. The Commission recessed at 10:00 a.m. The Commission reconvened at 11:00 a.m. at the Office of the Upshur County Clerk for the inspection and testing of election equipment for the upcoming February 8, 2014 school levy, special election. After discussion on motion by Donnie Tenny and Troy Brady, the Commission appointed J.C. Rafferty to be the County Magister Airport Authority. With no further business, on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by Donnie Tenny, the Commission meeting is adjourned at 11:45 a.m.
Thank you, Jackie. I've already got them marked in my appointment book, but next Friday at 7:00 o'clock.
When you're actually formally on the board?
What's that?
When you're actually formally appointed?
We just haven't notified them yet.
Well, I've anticipated that. Thank you, Jackie. Are there any additions or corrections? Absent of one, but if not, I request that some of the --
Second.
So moved to second, it is approved. Thank you again. Oh, go on.
Aye.
Okay. It's approved now.
Alex, take your break.
Thank you, Jackie. Okay. Continuing, we have no appointments until 1:00 when we will -- that is, the board or the Commission will conduct a review of the assessor's books on the district, Upshur County District. Those books have not been delivered yet. They will be delivered quite at that time, I'm certain, for our review. So we do have a few items for discussion, action, or approval. The first item is to approve early voting election workers for a Figure 2014 Special School Board Levy, and that's on page one. That's a letter from Debbie Thackerwell-Fon, Upshur County Clerk, dated January 24, addressed as follows. Please approve the hiring of early voting clerks Beatrice Adams, Irene Andrew, Nelda Light, Thana Wentz, Judith Miles, Eula Riffle, Philip Murphy, Betty Evner, Janet K. Wilson, William Shannon, and Phyllis Thacker for the special school levy election. The positions are temporary, starting January 27 and ending February 5 at the rate of $7.25 per hour. Signed, Debbie Thacker Wilfon. Do I have a motion to approve such list?
Then move.
Second.
Being moved and seconded, have a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Approved. Moving on, we have approved appointment of ballot commissioners for a two-year term. In that instance, we have another letter from Debbie Thacker Wilfon, dated January 27, as follows. Pursuant to Chapter 3, Article 1, Section 19 of the West Virginia Code, as amended, the undersigned hereby appoints and following ballot commissioners to serve in Upshur County, West Virginia, to begin serving on February 1, 2014, for a term of two years. Republican ballot commissioner shall be Phyllis Jean Thacker, who will serve until May 13, 2014, and then be replaced by Patricia L. Adams. On the Democratic side, Democratic ballot commissioner will be Judith Martin, who will serve until May 13, 2014, and then be replaced by Donald Matthews. Said ballot commissioner shall perform the duties of such commissioners at all general, special, and primary elections in Upshur County or any magisterial district thereof during their term of office. Signed, Debbie Thacker Wilfon. Do I have a motion to approve that request?
Tell me.
Second.
Having been moved and seconded, I ask for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Having been affirmed, we will pass that request. Next, I have a request approving order removing Tina K. Jones as execriks for a state of Vincent W. Miller deceased and appointing Sheriff Upshur County as personal representative.
Tell me.
Second.
Okay. May I have a vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Approved and signed and passed. Okay. Next, we have another one, approval of order removing Carolyn S. Wilson Collins as execriks of the state of Nelma Barnett Collins deceased and appointing Sheriff Upshur County as personal representative. Do I have a motion to approve that?
Second.
Having been approved and seconded, having my motion and seconded, all in favor of approval say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passed. Okay. Next, we have approval of grant, federal grant number EMW-2011-SS-00029, Upshur County Disaster Response Trailer Sustainment for 2014 in the amount of $21,000. And this is for trailers that are going to be obtained by Office Emergency Management for use with pet sequestration or safety during emergencies. Many individuals in the county have pets, but they're reluctant to leave at their residences in the event of electrical or water outages that have been experienced in the direct of, and this provides an opportunity for those animals to be maintained so having --
Now, is this a -- is this for a trailer?
Well, cages, trailers and --
No, but I thought we got a grant, cages and stuff, so it's all together.
This covers both the -- I think there is a trailer to move the pets, I think.
Cages, cages.
But there's also a special needs trailer. They are getting loading ramps for shelters that are not ADA accessible, so it kind of covers a few different things.
Is this just a trailer in the hall, cages and stuff? I mean, is this like a flat trailer or is it like a trailer where the animals stay?
I don't know the dimensions, but I think it's -- for the pets, I believe it's just signs, I think it's, you know, just to assist people in moving their pets. The loading ramps are for ADA accessible or to make shelters ADA accessible for special needs. I think there is a special needs trailer.
They have special -- I know that the cert team has had special training on how to handle those instances of animals and whatnot.
I think, and I think what relates to the animals is a field cart, so not actually a trailer, but it's a field cart to move heavy supply in animal crates, which would include cages for animals, food, that kind of thing.
For the grant, the amount of $21,000. Okay. Do I have a motion to approve this grant request?
Tell me.
Seconded?
Seconded.
Having moved and seconded, you guys made a rough for me today here. Having been moved and seconded, I'll ask for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? There would be no opposition, the --
I just, I voted for it, but I think this is just, personally, I think it's a waste of money to spend this money on this because no one's ever going to bring their dogs if there's a problem with it, but that's the problem with the federal government. They direct the grant money where they want to go to, and you know, as I've said all along, this fiasco at Charleston, we need to be concentrating on real emergencies, and, but the problem is, and I'm not blaming our local Office of Emergency Management, because these grants come from the federal and state government, and they direct them where they want the money to go. And I think we need to spend more time and more money in preparing for emergencies because the greatest potential emergency in any place is what happened in Charleston. And that's just my thoughts on it. I mean, I think, you know, I've got a dog, and tell him happens to that dog, I guarantee you, he's not going to go to a trailer. He's not going to go in a cage, and 90% of the people are not going to let their little dog go in a cage. They're going to say, hey, if that dog can't go in a shelter, I'm not going in a shelter. And I think that's 90, 90% of the people are not going to let their little dog go in some shelter in some cage away from them. But that's beside the point, but I just have a problem with the government telling us, you can only get grant money if you do it for what we want you to do. That's all I got to say about that.
Well, that is one of the issues relative to accepting money from any granting agency. They dictate the terms, right? Question from the --
Sustainment mean the same thing as maintain?
Yes, they have food, part of the grant, a part of the --
All right. That $21,000 is just to maintain those trailers?
No, they are purchasing, and I mean, I can --
It doesn't say anything about buying.
Well, that's just the title of the grant. I mean, there's, there's a whole packet here that explains everything that they're doing, and I can, you know, if you're interested in looking at it, you're certainly welcome to.
No, no, I don't want to.
But I mean, they're getting, it is not just for animals. They're getting heat stress monitors for disaster workers during the events because apparently they need it for cooling shelters. They're getting signs, they're getting bag kits, they're getting medical bag kits because apparently for shelter nurses, it's difficult for them to fly with medical equipment, so we need to have that here for them because it's difficult for them to actually bring it here sometimes. As I said, they're getting loading ramps for shelters that are not ADA accessible for people that have physical ailments that they wouldn't be able to get in themselves. They're getting fuel containers, storage containers for perishable bulk food and liquids. I mean, there's, there's a big list of things they're getting, so it's not just for sustainment. They are purchasing more fans for cooling ventilation of workers and shelter participants. So I mean, that's, you know, I didn't want to list all of that on the agenda for you. I can do that, but that was just, that was just to get it on, I mean, that's just the title of the room.
Additional questions?
I would say that probably a lot of what Megan just pointed out, the handicap ramps and that kind of stuff, is for people that, when they bring their animals in, it's in conjunction, I mean, it's sort of the grant of animal protection and preservation, so it's probably all tied in there.
It was most likely a law that requires anything that federal funds go to provide ADA requirements, I guess, maybe. That's just, one thing flows into another. Did I answer your question, Derek?
More food for stayers.
Food stands for dogs, Derek.
Next, we have for information, I am to view Land and Water Conservation Fund project six and seven. This is an annual letter we get from the West Virginia Development Office. It contains to Upshur County Park, which includes a swimming pool and a pavilion, and every year we get this and certify certain things for, for maintenance of our funding from the Development Office. Next, we have an ACO prescription drug discount card program, which monthly we normally discuss and encourage people to take advantage of. And for the month of December, there were 28 residents or 28 prescriptions that were filled by citizens of Upshur County. Size savings of $125.82. The average savings per prescription was $4.49, which was 21.39% of the cost of the prescription. Again, as we've been interested, we stressed to the citizens and to various media outlets that these cards are available to anybody. There is no membership required. You're a citizen of Upshur County, it is a, I would say, a cost free to the, to the person that uses it, accessibility to obtain prescriptions at lower costs than otherwise available at participating pharmacies, which I believe a number of them in our community did. Continuing, a correspondence from the State Tax Department budget amount estimate for FY 2014-15 statewide computer network in the amount of $38,498. Basically, we are being advised by the Department of Revenue, State Tax Department, that the following budget estimate is provided to assist the Commission in the task of preparing for the FY 14-15 budget on the statewide computer network. This would be account number 408, and the amount of Upshur County would be $38,498. And that is just a recommendation based on, but they anticipate we would need the budget in order to sustain that network for the assessor. However, they also recognize in here that there may be various conditions that arise unanticipated, which may require the Commission to increase the amount of money for that network, which we have an interest in or seeing.
But also makes a recommendation that we consult, says with the assessor to determine if she plans a higher level than usual data processing activity. If a higher level of activity is anticipated, you should revise the above favorable coverage to account for that activity. My question would be, do we pay this out of the evaluation fund?
I definitely do.
I think, I think what this is saying to me, that the increase over last year, well, that's what it says. It says the increase in the budget amount is a result of the increase in activities assessed with office, such as pranning, mailing of notices, posting reports, enhancement the State Tax Department has made to network. It wouldn't be too difficult to check and see if this is part of this. I would think that it sounds like that --
Are they talking about specific Upshur County or just large?
Yeah, nothing of Upshur County specifically does. Anyway, well, it would be hard to check and see.
This looks like to me a form of a, well, you're breach county.
Well, with the dollar amounts.
Right, dollar amounts for us.
This is county specific, and the name's county specific, and I think the fact they're assessors is the increase in what's costing us is county specific, so.
We'll find out.
Okay.
And then we have offices state auditor report of applying agreed upon procedures to Upshur County Magistrate Court period ending December 31, 12. Let's see. Says to close the copy of the report for applying agreed upon procedures for County Magistrate Court for the period ending December 31, 12. It is responsibility of all members of the court to review and report and take necessary actions to remedy all instances of noncompliance weakness and internal control as listed in the schedule of comments, which we do not have, but I'm assuming that again is a, a letter from the Supreme Court Administrator to all counties relative to overseeing their responsibilities.
Did we get a copy there in court?
Yes. I put it in smaller lettering under there, report under separate cover, so I do have that report here, but it's, I mean, so.
We can review it. Uh, let's see, of course, notice of meeting is board of declarization, which will start Monday, the 3rd of February. I don't know if we have any appointments, so identify, find the assessor.
Yes. I think on the 3rd, 12th and 18th, I believe.
Very well. Is there any other business that I believe we should take a recess until 1:00?
Well, should we have bills?
There's bills to pay and they --
Yeah, you can divide.
Yeah.
Let's make a difference.
I'd also like to take this time and Jennifer, it's her last day on duty, and I would like to thank her for her attention and focus that she's provided us. Wish her again the very best in her new journey and relocation on the Charleston.
Thank you.
Take a bottle of water, we have bottles of water.
We've already got a lot.
You may need it. Well, you know, it's interesting, in our meeting we went to, we could give a little report on our meeting we went to. But one interesting thing that they, I forget whether it was Miley, Jim Miley, the senior figure of the House, or Jeff Kessler, the President of the Senate, was talking about budget shortcuts that were hosing or budget mistake, and one of them was that was the amount of bottled water they have to buy, have been buying, and how that's created a deficit, maybe they're taking out of the ready date fund or a period of deficit. But it's interesting, you don't think about that, but I forget how many, I don't remember the amount, how many bottles of water, but it was millions.
Substantial, substantial.
Yes, millions, and then I saw a, an article in Something where it showed a picture that one of the Boy Scout groups, or one of the groups in Charleston, was, they had bags, garbage bags of empty water bottles that they were recycling and gathered because of the excessive amount of water that's been drunk because of the water problem in Charleston, which I think, you know, should be a wake-up call for everybody across the state and the nation of how susceptible we are to our water being tainted by, you know, whether it's accident or whether it's intentional by terrorist groups, because I tell you, that's scary, because, you know, there's a lot of, and I don't mean to get on bullying hold pitch here, but, or do a stump speech, but anyway, you know, the way they found out about that was the smell, the sweet liquor smell. There's a lot of dangerous and fatal chemicals that have those smell on them that could be dumped into any upstream from any intake right across the nation. People wouldn't know it, it would go clear out into the system, and people would be dying and dead before they had any idea what the cause was. It's scary, I'm telling you, and I think that the, the federal government and the state government, that's where they need to be concentrating their efforts on how we can protect our water system from things like that. But anyway, there were, there was some, some very good information that was disseminated to, and this was the West Virginia County Commission Association Annual Meeting for the spring legislating meeting, there's annual meetings in the fall. This is of all the county commissioners across the state of West Virginia, and there was a lot of really good information. And one thing that Joe DeLong, who is over the regional jail system, it's interesting, he's done a great job in helping to make changes to actually lower the regional jail freedom cost, and he's still working on issues to help do that, but he pointed out in his discussion how the, because that's, that's a top priority of county commissions. One of the top priorities is anything we can do to help either reduce the regional jail cost, you know, keep people out of regional jail through opportunities of rehabilitation, your community correction programs, and your, those type of things. But he pointed out two or three things that the legislature had passed thinking that was helping the regional jail, and it actually hurt them because of different personnel methods that they do and things of that nature. So I thought it was very interesting, and that's something we talked about in the County Commission meeting, is the, you got a thumbs up there, buddy. But how that, there's issues that a lot of times the legislature thinks they're helping situations and they're actually hurting them. And so sometimes, and because all they hear from counties is do anything you can to help reduce the regional jail bills, because they're, they're breaking the backs of a lot of counties, and they are, they're increasing financial burden, and there's, it's just such a complicated overall package that it's, it's very difficult to do, but so what the County Commission Association is going to be doing is look at some of those things that when the legislature passed laws, thought they were helping, but actually were hurting, so.
And you were reelected to the board.
Right. Well, that's --
Ten year.
West Virginia Association of Counties Board, as Vice President, yeah. So, but anyway, buddy, you were there, now maybe you cleaned something that I missed.
I thought it was very interesting that on the regional jail cost, it's a lot less than the state cost to house a prisoner. Thought that was very interesting. I think it was a very good point that the county commissioners are working together to try to come up with an idea, an idea which they will welcome to reduce the jail cost. I think if we can get the masters and the judges and everybody to look at alternate sentencing instead of just putting somebody in jail, it was a comment made down by one of the people sitting down at it. DUI came in there, not DUI, but intoxication, and he didn't know that was a master sitting there, and Master said something to him. He smarted the master off. Master set bond for basically public intoxication, $100,000, which costs the county, you're going to make $48 a day. You learn a lot going to these meetings. They have a lot of good ideas, and they just try to make the county commissioners be more productive. It's like 70% of the county commissions oppose the pay raise.
78%.
And the reason we opposed it is because of the financials of the county, you know, I mean, to give everybody a pay raise.
To give everybody a pay raise, really, you know what I mean? You have to have the money to do it and find out. A couple of the counties were thinking about withdrawing from the association because they was for pay raises. And there's not a county commissioner that I know of, you know what I mean, that wouldn't like to have a pay raise. But when you look at doing the right thing, you know what I mean? This isn't the year to give pay raises, in our opinion. So it was very interesting. You pick up a lot of knowledge down there. And like I say, it's a learning experience for me. I've only been here a year. And I learn stuff every single day. And it has been an experience.
Relating back to your comments regarding the legislature and the passing of bills relative to regional jail authority and maybe not being a positive impact. That often happens legislation with unintended consequences. Too many times legislatures pass a bill not looking at anticipating what impact it's going to have across the board in various areas. We've seen that on a national basis. It also affects states, which affects counties as well. So it's always good, before you pass legislation, to anticipate what the impact will be across the board, not just in one confined area that you believe you're focusing on. Thank you very much for that report, those reports. Having the case, we will go into recess pending our one o'clock review of the assessor books. Thank you.